Dissect them before you give them to them.
I never know what's in there.
I'd like to call the meeting to order with Pledge Allegiance, please. Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rule call, we're all present. It's hard to tell when we're spread out so far. Are there any additions of that to the agenda for tonight?
Uh, no additions, uh, Mr. Jansky, but I would make a note just for those folks here and uh, the folks that are in the lobby area, uh, just thank you for bearing with us. Our directive is to keep no more than fifteen people in this room, masks or no, uh, so this is the first time we're really putting it to the test, but we'll try to make sure everyone that is here to speak has an opportunity to do so. Uh, you're welcome to stick around if you, if you choose for the whole, whole meeting, but if you, uh, if your item's done and you wish to leave, you're certainly welcome to do so. You don't have to stay through the whole thing. But thank you. This is strange times and this is our first planning commission meeting. Several months, so this is a, a, a learning curve for us as well, but thank you for your patience.
I get a motion to approve the agenda as it stands. Your motion second, all in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, pass with all present. Notice of public hearing, the Way Park Planning Commission will hold a meeting at City Hall, Nineteenth Thirteenth Avenue North at six thirty or soon after Tuesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty, to hear the following request. The request of Leroy Ludwig and Alfred Caris revocable trust for primary and final plot to approve Granite Meadows Two and for the conditional use permit to allow a landscaping business in an ag- one agricultural residential district. The subject property is described as Outlet Eight, Granite Meadows, all in the city of Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. The request is being pursued in order to allow for a landscaping business upon the property re clothing, relocating of nearby Nature View Landscaping. Basic information regarding this quest is enclosed. Uh, you are, uh, receiving this notice. You live or own property within the notification area, simulated by state law. Please fill the contract with any questions or comments. Public hearing opened at six thirty-three.
And folks, the way this works is, uh, for each of these items, uh, I will present a staff report and then the, uh, the council will continue on with the public hearing and then anyone that's interested has an opportunity to come up and speak and the applicants are able, if they're in attendance, are able to respond to questions or have conversation with the planning commission as well before they ultimately, uh, make a recommendation or decision on the item for the evening. This first item, uh, again, is, uh, submitted primarily by Leroy Ludwig. The bulk of the request is to allow the conditional use permit for the landscaping business, uh, Nature's View Landscaping, which is, uh, actually, uh, closing up shop just a little ways south of their proposed location here. Their old location was fifteen thirty-eight County Road Six and their, uh, they sold that property recently and is looking to establish, uh, both residence and business, uh, on the parcel outlined in red. Specifically, uh, kind of this area right in here, if you can see the screen. The, the house component does not require any special approval, but running the landscaping business does. And that's what requires the conditional use permit and, uh, the plating component is more of a, uh, a procedural, uh, requirement that's a formality before you can do any building there, uh, because it's currently an outlot. Uh, the intent is that the applicant would design this building as, uh, what are called, uh, shouses or shed house, uh, post-frame construction building. The applicant has been coordinating, uh, with the architect, builder, uh, and the city building official on, uh, potential plans for the property to ensure building code compliance because, uh, shouses within city limits, uh, can pose some, uh, kind of unique, uh, building compliance or building code issues. Uh, nothing that can't be worked through, but, uh, we can't issue any building permit for the property until both the plating of the property would occur, uh, and the conditional use permit was approved. If the conditional use permit would not be approved for some reason, uh, he could still go ahead and build a house. There would not be any issue with that. That would, that could go forward without special approval. The applicant, uh, has submitted a site plan. I will move down to that here. Noting the proposed configuration as well as a narrative of the, of the proposed business. Uh, the business functions essentially the same as the previous location, uh, which has not posed any issues and concerns, at least in my time for the city, and that's been five years. I'm not aware of any major concerns in reviewing our files in the fifteen years total that it's been there. Perhaps there has been, but I've not been made aware of that. The proposed business would operate five days a week in the summer, uh, no holidays or weekends with summer hours typically seven AM to five PM. Winter hours are typically twelve hours after a snowfall to accommodate, uh, the plowing activities. Uh, just going through the site plan quickly, you can see there's a, a proposed gravel parking lot. The, the building itself, uh, the, the drain field noted for the septic. Piles for, for storage areas for the landscaping components and, uh, kind of some work truck parking, rock bins for the decorative rock that they utilize. The driveway running up, running into the property from Granite View and, uh, it's, there's a small outbuilding of some sort there that's, um, maybe visible from the road now potentially that, that would be right where the driveway would be. The structure itself would have the residential space for the applicant and his wife and an office and storage space on the opposite end. Uh, I ran through the equipment that would be stored outside, but it, it would include pickup and trailers, rock bins for the storage of the rock and mulch, um, pretty typical fare for a landscape type business. The proposed storage areas are of sufficient distance from the roadway that I, I don't believe that there's a need for, uh, specific screening unless the applicant would so choose, but, uh, I don't know how many folks are here tonight that may feel otherwise and that's certainly at the discretion of the, uh, city, or excuse me, the planning commission to make a recommendation for screening if it's something that behooves them. I wouldn't have any concerns with that if it's a requirement. But, uh, from what I, what I've seen, I think it's far enough back that, uh, unless there's major objections from adjacent landowners, I wouldn't see a need for, uh, specific screening. The proposed driveway and the parking areas are denoted as gravel. Uh, you may note that, uh, we recently reviewed this same issue with the, um, the church request in the old Nature View Landscaping, uh, area that even though our city ordinance requires that, uh, a conditional use, use permit would be a trigger for a property to have its parking hard surfaced. Um, I don't necessarily feel that's appropriate for the rural nature of the area and, and the nature of the business. So I would advocate that, uh, as in the previous case, which was also approved by the city council, uh, that a exemption be provided that would not require hard surfacing at this time. In the future, if, uh, things change, if there's a request to expand or if there's additional buildings, that could be evaluated at that time. The plating of the property again is required only because the property is currently an outlot and outlots can't have building permits issued for them. I don't have any concerns with, with the plating of the property. We don't have a, a requirement for payment in lieu with this because it was already platted. So there's no payment in lieu of parkland dedication associated there. Typically we'll see that, but in this case, it's, it's already been handled some years ago. My recommenda- recommendation, uh, at, at this moment would be, uh, approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. Number one, existing parking areas are exempted from need to be hard-surfaced with concrete or asphalt, uh, provided they are not in, uh, enlarged from the proposed plan due to limited access via current, uh, uh, Granite View Road. Future projects such as, uh, building expansion, new building construction or, or, um, future subdivision, but, or additional plating of property may trigger need to hard-surface parking areas at that time. Uh, parking is number two, parking would not be allowed on Granite View Road. Uh, County Road Six would not be applicable. That's a, uh, mistake in my writing there. Uh, number three, parking and storage areas shall adhere to plans as reviewed by planning commission and/or city council unless otherwise approved by staff. Uh, number four, utilization of building or portions thereof shall be subject to review and approval as per City of Way Park Building Official. All exterior and interior work shall be subject to necessary building, plumbing, electrical and other permits as deemed required by city staff. Number five, all necessary construction activities shall be completed to satisfaction of City of Way Park Building Official prior to commencement of any activities in impacted areas. Number six, any new exterior signage shall require a permit prior to installation or fabrication of signage to provide for review or, and approval. Number seven, uh, ground or pylon signs shall require a footing inspection prior to construction to confirm compliance of city code requirements. And lastly, number eight, uh, at times, city store water may be made available to the property. The property will be required to connect to them and abandon and seal private septic and well facilities within one year. That would conclude my recommendation. We can open it up for questions of the, uh, planning commission or, or for, uh, members of the public if, if you're ready.
Missioner has, have any questions or? Okay, it's a public hearing, so anybody from the public have any comments that they'd like to make?
Is that in conjunction with, uh, twenty-eighth Avenue or twenty-eighth? Or a little south of Mills Fleet there, past twenty-three? Where is that location in conjunction with that?
It'd be south of where Granite Crossings is. So it'd be to the south. It went beyond that road when I, I believe when it comes. There's no set place for that. But if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
I'm just gonna turn this map on and you can see the area, uh, a little bit expanded to put it in context. This would be the, the subject property right here where my cursor is. And this is, would be Granite View Road here. County Road Six intersection down here. The roundabouts up to the, to the northeast.
Uh, if you're looking at going, uh, south from Mills Fleet, is what your question is on twenty-eighth? That intersection would be, that property is east of that intersection about a, three quarters of a mile to the west, east. At the stop sign that has you go past Bell Player, you'll come to the stop sign to go right or left. Okay, that, that property's about three quarters of a mile east of there.
Yeah, this, this property is well away from, from that location. This is in the, the southern, southernmost, uh, portion of, of the city limits.
Put it in perspective, it's just a little bit west of Highway fifteen. Where Highway fifteen goes up.
Hello, my name is, uh, Eli Creeder. My wife and I own the property immediately south and east of the subject property and we have some serious concerns about the possibility of the proposed business operating at this property. Um, I'm gonna talk first about the zoning of this property and the surrounding neighborhood and then I'm gonna talk about the specific issues with a business like that operating out of that property and how it's gonna impact our property and our, and our family. Um, on the zoning, the property and the entire surrounding area are zoned rural residential, meaning these properties support use of homes, agricultural activities. And the activities that go along with a business such as Nature's View Landscaping would exceed the volume that's, that's expected from a typical residential property or agricultural property. Uh, for example, the traffic, where a typical household would have about two drivers coming and going, or agriculture operation would have equipment operated by one person or several people on occasion. This business would have, I assume, the two owners coming and going as well as employees entering the property starting around six forty-five, six thirty every weekday. Trucks leaving shortly after that, returning to the property as needed, returning around five PM. Employees leaving the property after that, as well as suppliers entering the property, I assume. Uh, now that's the spring, summer and fall traffic. The winter traffic is what I'm more concerned about. Uh, the employees will be entering the property to pick up trucks, salt, and then leaving the property for twelve hours after every snowfall. And this could be in the middle of the night, all night, several nights or, or days in a row. And this type of traffic does not align with the way the property and the area is zoned. As far as the future use of this property, Way Park Comprehensive Plan has no mention of intentions for this type of use. The plan indicates that the property is intended for low-density residential use and has no mention of the use for business at this property. I have, let's see, I have, uh, from the, uh, city code here, uh, permitted uses, obviously this isn't, doesn't fall in that, which is why it needs a conditional use permit. Um, and then they go on the list, the conditional uses, which it does not fall under any of those categories. So that's one thing that I found was conflicting. Um, the next thing I have here is, oh, requirements for, uh, for a conditional use permit to be approved. And I'm just gonna summarize a couple that I think it's conflicting with. It will not be detrimental to the safety, comfort of the neighborhood. Will not be harmonious with the general objectives of the comprehensive plan in the city and this ordinance. Will not be disturbing to existing neighboring uses. Will not cause excessive production of traffic, noise, and will conform to the type of uses that are generally permitted within the district. And then I have, oh, and then it just goes on. Variances shall only be permitted when they're in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance and they're consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I looked ahead at the comprehensive plan and it does not have this use listed. Um, I'm sure you guys have the map. It's not news to you. Okay, so that's the zoning stuff. Here are the issues with the particular business property combination here. The property is only accessible through that narrow strip, um, located immediately north of our property, uh, that connects to Granite View Road. Um, our, our home sits close to that lot line and the proposed driveway for this business would be about fifty feet from our home. Uh, there's currently a crude driveway close to that location and, and I know that vehicles driving there are clearly audible and lights are visible inside our house. With our growing family and young kids, I expect this to create some hardship for us due to the high volume of traffic through the driveway early mornings and possibly at any hour of the night in the winter. This is gonna result in less sleep for children and in turn, my wife and I, ultimately a lower quality of life. In addition to the disturbance of the driveway, we will be guaranteed more traffic directly in front of our house, which will raise danger for our kids being hurt or killed by a vehicle. All these issues in turn would come into play in the value of our property. Everyone here, well, I guess, anyone who's looked at the site would know that, uh, driveway with this kind of traffic, that close to our property, would damage the value of our property significantly and make it more difficult to sell if we had to. None of these issues would be present if the property were used in line with its intended use. To sum all this up, the business operating on this property would diminish our family's quality of life and damage the value of our property. The business would be using the property to profit at our expense and I purchased my property with an expectation of the City of Way Park to adhere to their zoning regulations and their comprehensive plan to protect me from the hardship, from hardship like this. If this permit was approved, I think it would be out of line from the comprehensive plan and a pretty good example of spot zoning. And I expect the City of Way Park would be responsible for the hardship my family would experience. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to respond to that briefly. Uh, as far as the comprehensive plan, that guides long-range growth. The underlying, uh, controlling aspect is ultimately the, the agro-residential district. You're correct in that. What you didn't mention, I don't know if you saw it or not, but, uh, in that listed conditional uses, there is one final clause that allows the city council to, uh, review or consider, uh, other, uh, uses that they can, that they find to be not injurious or, uh, harmful to, uh, neighboring uses and that otherwise fit the character of the area. I'll leave that to the planning commission to, uh, carry out a discussion as to, you know, whether you feel that this use would fit that criteria, but there is a, what we generally refer to as the, the catch-all clause and most of those only districts do have that because there's, there's always gonna be, uh, projects or proposals that don't necessarily fit hard and fast into the defined, uh, permitted or conditional uses.
Anybody else in the public would like to make a comment or please come up, state your name?
Hi, I'm Lauren Creeder, Eli's wife. This is Jenny Law, our neighbor.
Me, I'm just concerned, again, about all the traffic that we're gonna have. And if they were located on County Road Six, they had a lot of room without no neighbors. And the neighbors were far enough away that they weren't affected by what we will be affected by. And I am concerned about a mess. Are we gonna be able to see their masses that they have going on? They say they're gonna put it in bins and they won't have no clutter around there, but I believe we will be able to see that.
I would first like to express my appreciation for the opportunity to talk tonight and, um, and for you all, the service that you have given the city and each of us. Out of respect for everybody's time, I'm not gonna go into every detail that I feel is really important tonight, but, um, I'd like to echo what Eli said. Um, he had some really good lines of reasoning, I feel. And I would like to provide a few more pieces of information. The attorneys at Franz Huldgren Everson have informed me that this project could be subject to public and private nuisance law litigation as well as environmental proceedings due to some Minnesota state statutes. Minnesota State Statute six seventeen point eighty-one states that, among others, the following constitutes public nuisance. Maintaining or permitting a condition that unreasonably annoys, injures or dangers the safety, health, morals, or repose of any of the public. My concerns in regard to this are of the welfare of the city and the neighborhood. Granite View Road is not built to withstand this kind of traffic or the damage done by large vehicles. Traffic created by this business has potential to cause more damage than necessary, creating safety concerns and costly repairs. In addition, this business would cause undue hardship for the neighborhood with respect to repose and noise. Minnesota Statute five sixty-one point zero one defines a private nuisance as anything injurious to health, indecent or offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. I feel this proposed business would absolutely interfere with my family's ability to enjoy our property and in turn, our lives, as well as inhibit the free use of property with respect to the safety of our children. I also have concerns surrounding the environment and wildlife. Corey Park is near this location and that area, and the area that our home is in and that this building would be in is considered very high for groundwater sensitivity to pollution, which means groundwater pollution can occur within hours. I don't know exactly what type of chemicals a landscaping company would have. I suppose fertilizer, probably pesticides and possibly dyed tree bark that will wash away with every rainfall. An environmental assessment worksheet will need to be completed prior to construction and possibly an environmental impact statement. Finally, Minnesota State Statute one forty-five A point zero one states that any member of a board of public health, county or city that refuses or neglects to perform a duty imposed by statute or ordinance is guilty of a misdemeanor. To summarize, I would really like to have Mr. Ludwig and his family as neighbors. I think they'd be wonderful neighbors and have heard really great things. But I don't think this business or this type of business is appropriate for this location or in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Russ Bell. I also live on Granite View Road. Probably four, five, six hundred yards from the proposed.
Sir, could you, could you, uh, note your address again into the mic from the minutes later?
Twenty-four oh-nine Granite View Road.
Thank you.
Approximately six, seven hundred yards probably from that proposed site. Uh, these folks came very well-prepared. Did a wonderful job. I support their effort. The road is not capable of handling any more traffic. The road right now in its shape should be condemned and I think the city knows that 'cause I spoke to the city on many occasions. Uh, many of the neighbors did not get a copy of this notification. I gave it to some of them, but there are other people that live on that road that probably should have seen this. So they've done pretty much everything I was gonna say if I gave the speech. I think they did a wonderful job. And I think we should take a real close look at this, especially the highway.
Thank you.
We're also neighbors.
Don Silvers, this is Brenda Brannon. And we live just, actually just north of where the driveway would be.
And we concur with, I mean, with Russ, with the road cannot handle another car and I agree it should be condemned. And we support these guys with their-
Eli and Lauren did a great job of-
Great job and we want you guys to really take this serious and look into it.
We're just here to support them. We're not totally opposed to the project. However, we are, we wanna be neighborly and, and we are definitely want them, want you guys to do the right thing for them.
Anybody else from the public like to put an input?
My name is Leroy Ludwig, Nature's View Landscaping. Um, I would be the owner of the property we were talking about. Um, I guess my business is a very small business. For example, today we had four cars come in, two trucks leave. Um, we don't do high volume. We don't do retail out of it. Um, very small traffic going in and out. I guess it could be worse. It could be a development back in there, putting a lot of lots, more traffic coming in there. We'd keep that to a minimum. I am the only owner. The previous location was two owners. We had two businesses. So it would be less traffic from that already. When we previously had our, uh, last location, we would travel Granite View Road quite a bit then too. I do agree it's in rough shape, but I think it's in the works to have that resurfaced or redone as well. We don't do any lawn fertilizing, weed killer, that kind of thing. We don't have any chemicals on site. Basically, it's hardscapes, paving stones, retaining walls. Um, we'll do a little bit of lawn seeding, that type of thing. Basically, it's hardscapes, paving stones, retaining walls. We'll do a little bit of lawn seeding, that type of thing, but keep it pretty simple. We don't deal with the chemicals issue anyways. Again, we want to be neighborly with anybody else as well. If there's an issue with visibility, I think from standing in the land back there looking around, I can't see any other houses. But if there's an issue, maybe it's screening, some type of privacy fence or trees or something to accommodate the neighbors, too, and to make sure they're happy with things as well. That's all I had. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? With that in mind, could I get a motion to close public hearing?
Make a move, Mr. Chair, that we close the public hearing.
We had a motion and a second, close public hearing. All in favor, sing a by aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Public hearing closed at seven o'clock. John, I have one question for you. Wasn't landscape at one time, considering I egg one thing in because of the dirt and the rock and the gravel and stuff of that, was considered egg?
I don't know. It may have been perhaps prior to, to my tenure. I don't know the exact history of how Nature's View Landscaping came to be in its previous location since that zone is the same. Perhaps the applicant could speak to that since it may, it may predate current ordinances. Maybe it was prior, it was established prior to the time in the city. I'm not positive. That's why we treated it under the, the catch-all clause of the conditional use, since it's not a defined permitted or conditional use. But it was of my opinion that, that I thought it would, it would be complimentary. Obviously, these folks have some, some concerns, and I think they're valid. I don't know if perhaps some, this is one of those items we should maybe look at tabling and see if there's something that could be worked out and if there's a path forward as far as screening or, or some level of separation, if that would be amenable to, to everybody. Just perhaps thinking out loud a little bit.
Yes, I would, I would like to ask if proper screening could help the issue of the sight line. If screening was put in, if row of trees or that type of thing was put in, I know that wouldn't alleviate the traffic problem and the road conditions, but would that type of thing help with, make it more amicable to the neighbors?
Eli Creeter, again, what I personally in our property has in response to that is that, that strip that they use to access that property is so narrow, I think it's going to be impossible for them to get their driveway far enough away to, you know, make that high volume not bothersome to our residents.
John, do you have any idea how wide that easement is accessing that property? I know the easement was left there when the property was sold, the house was sold off of it. Hundred feet?
Yeah, that, that would seem about correct. I was just looking at the, as you can see me toggling on the screen here. Just looking at the, the kinds of things that are, are listed conditional uses for comparison. You know, these are all things that realistically, I mean, you're not going to see these kinds of development to happen too often. You know, a golf course, a, a country club, a tennis club, greenhouses maybe, ski runs, automobile trails, riding trails. Now, the, the private school, churches, hospitals. We, we saw a church for the old property last, last month. Facilities connected with nursery and tree farms, kennels, animal hospitals, stables, those sorts of things. And then this is where we get into that category that, you know, considering a, a smaller landscape business to be conditional and found out to be detrimental to the city's general health or welfare. And it's that last line that, that's the concern that's being brought up is, you know, with these folks so close, it is that significantly detrimental to them, and I think you're going to have this same conversation later tonight as well, perhaps. You know, if this were further separated like the, like the previous property, you know, where there's more distances involved, maybe it's not as big an issue. But, you know, I, I am empathetic with, with your location there. Don't get me wrong. I, I certainly am. I have young children as well, and, and, you know, I, if I were in the same boat, I'd be exactly where you are. So I, I appreciate your input here. I, I'm just thinking that there may be some way that perhaps there's a way that is amenable to all parties that we take another time, or take another few weeks and, and push it back rather than just outright deny because I, I think there is perhaps some options that, that could be explored. But I, I don't want to necessarily vote or recommend for a project where I know that there's concerns from folks that are already there, already nearby, already invested in that location. And I don't necessarily want to vote against or recommend against a, a project that I, I don't think is dented the water yet. So just for, for discussion.
I like the idea. Instead of saying a yes or no at this point right here, right now, because if, if I did, it would be a yes. Because I think there are some misconceptions about this business and the volume we're talking about and, and the impact it's going to have on the land and the neighborhood. So maybe it is in the best interest to table it.
And, and I would note that as far as the traffic, you know, Mr. Ludwig mentioned that, that the traffic is probably equal to or lesser than what they're experiencing, what they're experiencing at the previous location. This isn't a, an additional business being dropped in there. It's, it's just one that's, that's moving. And much of that traffic probably was already coming down Granite View Road. You know, it's, it's not necessarily going east or west every time on, on Old Six. We, we know that Granite View is in bad shape, and, and that's outside my purview. That's Public Works and Engineers' charge, but I, I do believe that there's plans to improve that in the near future there.
One thing that should be noted, I believe that's the only ingress to this property. So that regardless of what goes into that property, that is the only access. So, you know, I mean, that has to be considered.
That, that is correct. That's exactly, that's the way, why it was established, the way it was, because the parcels, to do anything with it, it has to have that access. It has to have a minimum street frontage to get people in and out.
Whatever vehicles go for whatever purpose that land is used, have to access through that way because it's the only access to it. Should be remembered.
Being it's not a development for houses, the driveway is going to be a lot smaller than a road going through there. They should be able to put some type of broom of trees or whatever so you don't get headlights in your house and privacy. But I think it should be talked and see if you guys can work something out. So I'd be in favor for.
I think there should be room for some kind of compromise, and maybe a, a month would give some room for, for discussion. And now that the, the issues have been brought to light, let's, let's talk about them. I guess I would move to table it for a month. I don't know how that sets with the applicant, but.
Hey, I'd just like to say one more thing, that there is commercial property available at the end of Granite View Road, about three-quarters of a mile down. So could have a similar business in an appropriate location. Thanks.
Down which way?
North at the, by the roundabout, and it's still in Wake Park.
I'll second the table.
We got a motion and a second to table the, till the next meeting. All in favor, sing a by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Table it with all the present.
So now, what are we going to be doing while this motion, while this motion is tabled?
What, what will happen now is I will go back and, you know, work with the, with the applicant to see if there's a proposal that can be brought up that could resolve at least some of the, the concerns that have been brought up. What, you know, these meetings are recorded, so we will have these, the comments on hand. I, I don't think there's an expectation that it's going to solve every single concern, but maybe it gets it to a point where, where there's a increased comfort level with it. At that point, we'll, you know, we'll bring it back with maybe some revised proposed conditions, perhaps a screening plan of some sort. It sounds to me like that would be at least a priority. You know, we'll, we'll look at the concerns that were raised as far as whether there should be a environmental assessment worksheet completed.
All right.
We'll bring it back and see, you know, it, it may, it may be enough to garner support then, and it may not. It gives us an extra couple ti, couple weeks to, to work out the bugs, and then there will be another public hearing where everyone can weigh in again. And maybe it gets to a point where there's some, some additional comfort. We can get some, perhaps more detail from the applicant and swage fears if, if they're, if it's not a, a operation that is as big as, as being purported, or maybe they, they put some limitations on the number of vehicles or something like that. Everything's kind of on the table right now to see if there's a way that it can work and be amenable to neighbors as well. We'll come back next month.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it should be mentioned now. Our next meeting would fall on primary election day. How is that handled? Move it up, move it back?
It, it will be on the following Wednes, the, the Wednesday after.
On Tuesday?
No, it'll be the, the Wednesday immediately after the, the primary day. Yep. That's a good note. Thank you.
All right then.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Good notice of public hearing. The Wake Park Planning Commission will hold a meeting, City Hall, Nineteenth Thirteenth Avenue North, six thirty or soon thereafter, on Tuesday, July fourteenth, 2020 to hear the following request: Request to Independent School District seven forty-two for a variance from an ordinance section fifty-three point one-two, sub-point five, and table fifty-three point two to permit monument signs with integrated LED display panels and increase size allowance for school district property in, in R-one, single-family residential district. The property is legally described as Lot One, Block One, St. Cloud area early childhood center. The property is addressed as seven hundred Seventh Street South. The request is being pursued in order to facilitation and installation of electronic message board sign at Quarry View, replacing portion of existing sign. Basic information regarding the request is enclosed. Public hearing opened at seven fifteen.
Chair Jansky, folks in attendance tonight, members of the public watching. Again, this is a, an application for St. Cloud School District seven forty-two for variance from our sign standards relating to schools and relating to the underlying zoning district and to allow for incorporation of electronic display into the existing monument sign at Quarry View. This proposal is only for the Quarry View sign. There's, there's two signs there, one at Quarry View, one at Discovery. This would only be for the Quarry View sign within the existing framework. There's no enlargement of the sign proposed. Essentially, all they, they are looking to do is swap out that blue component that's in there with an electronic display. You may recall that we've looked at this issue before. It was actually a couple of years ago already. Back in twenty seventeen, the district approached the city with a variance request for both signs to increase the size and height allowance and to allow for the two electronic signs at that time that are pursuing both Quarry View and Discovery School. That was done in line with the school districts kind of their cohesive sign plan. But they have similar signs at most of their facilities, if, if not all the other ones. The city council ultimately did approve some height and size variance after the recommendation for approval from the planning commission. I was supportive of the request at that time, but the city council, while approving some height and size variance, did deny the request for electronic sign allowance citing concerns with the adjacent properties. They then moved forward with the revised design that did not incorporate the electronic displays, and instead you got the, the blue nameplates that are on there. District staff later privately approached the multiple city council members to discuss concerns with the sign as they still maintained a desire to pursue the electronic signage at some point, and that time has come. I, I don't typically, you know, support the practice of making second attempts at, at a project effort that's been previously denied by the city council. That's not something I, I will typically recommend, but it is within the right of the applicant to do so. And in their current application, the school district is opting for that, that sign at Quarry View only again. I, I do still believe, despite my, you know, dislike for pursuing something that's already been denied, I still do believe that the proposed electronic sign is, is consistent with the scale and, and frontage of the property. And the screen size is justifiable. It would be well within the scope. This isn't a largely oversized sign at all. It's, it's absolutely within the appropriate scale of the property. And it is consistent with the other school district properties that they've been moving towards a unified sign design language. I, I believe that it's, the purpose of promoting public information and awareness of school and community activity, activities is in keeping with the intent and spirit of the ordinance. And I've recommended consideration of neighboring residential properties that have sightlines that would be impacted or potentially impacted by suggested programming options which reduce nighttime concerns. The school has, has addressed this in their application, noting that they'd like this sign to be turned on at approximately seven AM and off by eight PM, and, and that can all be programmed into these signs. It's, it's easy to, to adjust the settings if it becomes problematic. A primary intent of this sign is to inform drivers of people crossing the street at peak times, which has been a, a recurring safety concern that's been taken up multiple times with city staff and city council. The configuration of the, the sign would have minimal impacts to neighbors and apartments across the street, although the, the nearest residential home to the west of the sign could be impacted. That home does have a couple of windows on that side. I, I don't know how it's, how their layout is, is done, but they may see the sign through those windows. I, I do believe that the applicant has demonstrated the practical difficulties for a variance, primarily due to the scale of the property with relation to the existing standards. I don't believe it'll be detrimental to the other uses in the area, and I would recommend approval of, of the variance for the electronic sign display on Quarry View. With, with that, we can open it up for questions of me or to the public.
If you could come up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Cap Fiddler. I live the first house west of Discovery School. And what you had just mentioned there, that's going to affect us because you look out the window there on the east side of the house, there that sign is, it's probably, it's not even a hundred yards from my property line. I guess I can go along with it, but there's issues along that corridor there that need to be addressed. And safety is a big, big problem out there. People crossing that road there where they shouldn't be, and I've seen so many close near hits. It just sickens me, you know? And I want to know. And, uh, I wanna know if you guys have any, uh, dimensions on the sign or is that the, the, the existing frame that is there right now? Is that where they're gonna just work on that?
Yep, that's correct. A- and the, the applicant can maybe fill in the, the exact dimensions after, uh, when they get a chance. But it's my understanding that it would be within the, the framework as, uh, that's already there. I don't believe there's any enlargement proposed at all. Is that, is that correct, Adam?
Yeah, it was designed, as you can see, it was designed to have that sign, get it? All we did is due to the fact of being unconscious of the neighbors, just upgraded to the highest definition possible. So it has a light ray, oh, eye light, whatever you call it.
Adam, Adam, guys, would, would you mind coming up to the, to podium and make sure we can catch that for the record? And stating your name.
So that sign will light up.
I mean, that's, that's the sign that's, uh, gonna be there. And that's what you, a lighted view right now.
Well, he inserted it. That's, it says right now where it says Quarry View.
Yep.
The top might come off, but otherwise the sign was, that was designed to have the original sign, just like Discovery's was, that base. To make sure it was aesthetically pleasing to the community. Um, and right now we just have blue panels. Um, the concept was, it's really dark in the morning. And this sign's gonna allow it to say, please slow down, children crossing, um, you know, speed limit. Because right now we have a police officer with the, um, lights going on some mornings. And then we get calls, you know, what's going on at Discovery? What's going on at Quarry View? This sign in conjunction with Rams is why we picked it was due to the, it'll show down by the crosswalk for the people coming from both ways. To slow down, that we have kids there. And with our partnership, as you, on the other side, you can see we got that new park partnership with you guys. We'll be able to put, you know, ultimate times, make, you know, clean up, be respectful. So it's all, the sign is about safety and letting everybody know what's going on there. Because that park is just, you know, we put thirty thousand dollars, thanks to Burnix, into the seed, into that, the, um, basketball courts. There's brand new tennis courts, soccer fields in the back. And that, we don't have an overhead light right now, so people know that's the place to go in. We want one central hub. Because on the other side of Discovery, there's another entrance that our people are going in. So this sign was, we went from two to one, just so people ain't know where to go in. Safety for the morning, shut it off at eight o'clock at night. And then with this dimmer is to be able to dim down if people have issues. We can do it all from inside. Um, and the district worked real hard with Rams to make sure that whatever we put up A will last. And it's clear, and it's gonna promote the safety on that road. So as the children cross and, people don't know, I should say all students, because we have four hundred adult learners. That use, um, Quarry View weekly as well, that come and go off that bus line. And that's some of the things is, they need to know, the other one I'll do is we'll put school closures on there or delayed starts. So people aren't dropping off or getting off the bus, not knowing, and then being stuck waiting for the bus as well. I hope that answered all your questions.
Hi, Troy Raum from, uh, RHL in St. Cloud. Um, we've been working with the district on the digital signs. Uh, the image size, uh, of the digital portion would be thirty-seven, well, thirty-eight inches by a hundred and twenty-six inches. Uh, the reason, reflecting back to what, what happened originally with these two sign structures, is they were approved, uh, I think you remember, John. Uh, by the city acci- accidentally, because I don't think everybody, when they built the new schools, really focused on every single component of it. And by the time we got involved, uh, and it went to city council, uh, for approval. The base structure was built by the, uh, uh, construction company. So the signs kinda were there already, and they had been pre-approved. But then we caught at the last minute that was a little bigger than what the city would normally allow. And maybe in this location, I wasn't sure what the ordinance was relating to that. But, uh, that's kinda why we're stuck to try to fill what was already built here, um, and approved in the, in the early days of, uh, uh, the construction of the buildings. So I'm here to answer any other questions you guys might have when the time comes about the technology or, or how we can control it and turn it on and off, brightness and things like that. It is all dimmed by light sensors, and that can all be set according to ambient light values and such. So if there's issues with the neighbors and stuff, we can, we can, uh, turn the sign down and things like that. But I'll be happy to answer any other questions you guys might have.
Any other questions from the public? Or comments?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. All in favor, saying by saying aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. Public hearing closed at seven twenty-five.
Um, question, uh, has there been any complaints about the signage, uh, by residents, uh, to date?
I've not received anything, any concerns on the signage. From my experience, uh, our, our ordinances kinda limit the, uh, the placement of, uh, the electronic signs in regards to residential. You can be located in, you can put a electronic sign in a commercial district. But you can't put one in a residential district. And this is a residential district underlying. One good comparison, I would, I would say, um, for re- realisticness of this would be the Rajuv sign. That they put in a elec- electronic sign a couple of years ago. Uh, that is located across from a residential area. And it's even at a little bit of an angle that, that faces out that residential area. That's all permitted under ordinance. And I've not had a single concern or anyone complain about that since it's been up there. Um, I honestly thought we might get a couple, but it's never come up. It, I think it dims a little bit at night. And they avoid the, the bright colors at night perhaps, and it hasn't been a problem. So I, I wouldn't see this as being any worse. And this is being done, you know, to convey community events, which, you know, absolutely, I think the city wants to, to promote. And, um, try to deal with the recurring safety problem there in the same swoop. So, uh, I am supportive of this. I, I do, I do note that, um, like they said, uh, with electronic sign, the, the, part of the value of it is that if there's issues, it could be adjusted in the programming. You don't necessarily have to go and start breaking it down with a sledgehammer to try and fix concerns. It could be tweaked with a keyboard. Until you get it to something where everybody is comfortable with it.
I guess I'd have to ask Mr. Fiddler, you're the main one to be affected by this being just first one west. Uh, is it something you think you can live with?
Well, we'll see what it looks like. I'm not gonna give you a, that's it right now, but we'll, guys made your decision. And I would hope that you work with the, uh, the city council and the city of Wade Park, uh, police department, the school district for sure. To make that a safe area out there, because I'm telling you, somebody is gonna get nailed there, and it's, it's not gonna be a pretty sight. And we have small kids next to us, and we have two mishaps out there in that corner in the last week and a half. As a matter, matter of fact, they, one happened on, uh, week ago, last Sunday night. And the other one ha- it happened this last week, that fence on the corner there, on my property. They wiped that whole twenty feet, uh, uh, chain link fence out. We tried to pull it up on our cameras at the house and couldn't, uh, couldn't, uh, get a, you know, but I guess they did catch the, you know, caught the person that done it. And then up there in the corner, the, uh, northwest intersection there would be the south. Actually, uh, the same side of the street there, somebody come along and moved the, uh, and underground cables and everything to box. I mean, that's what's going on out there. Lot of things, uh, need to be, need to be looked at.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I do have one question. Uh, when you're talking about the changing of, uh, uh, a- a- adding information to announcements and stuff like that. Is that all gonna be done by the school administration, uh, superintendent then, or something like that? Would have like a, a keypad? Uh, it'd be wifi or hardline connected or?
Yeah, they, uh.
It is, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but it, if we, when folks are speaking, if you can come up to the mic, because otherwise we can't get it for the minutes.
Yeah, sorry, Troy, again.
Thank you.
Yes, it's controlled at the school office, but they'll also have the ability to control it from one location if they want, through an internet, uh, web-based controller. So in the event, maybe the school's down or they need to change a program and somebody can't get there, they could still assign someone to maybe ch- make those adjustments from home. But to his point, I think it's a great thing to maybe be flashing some message when the kids are really out and about. Because I understand that the school's right there and the apartment's across the street. There's probably a lot of people are gonna, you know, not use the, the intersection properly and try to jump across. And maybe we can bring some more attention to those specific times, because we can schedule, they can pre-schedule like for the one hour in the morning that, the main activity. And then in the afternoon, the same thing, when the buses started coming roaring in, they can have that on the schedule to switch. And then go back to community or, or daytime messages to the bypassers, and then back to traffic times. And it's a little more dangerous to bring that to everybody's attention, slow down, and, you know, put some big messages up there about literally slow down, kids crossing or pedestrian crossing. Uh, so yes, it's, it's.
And then it'll be, there'll be a team of people trained on how to change it, but it'll be all run out of Quarry View. But Jen Noble, the supervisor, community aide, and myself will be able to have it on our laptops. So if we get a call from Chief Bentrude, hey, uh, can you get this up quick? We can do it from home and throw it up there. Or if we get a call, hey, that blue light is, is nuts with the sun right now, we can just turn it off. So the, the key was, is, um, cause we, they've upgraded from the two years. We've got the, got the most flexible one we can. Superintendent Jed, I don't think wants to be in charge of the sign, but if he gets a call, he'll call me and expect that we can get a change right away.
Thank you.
Other questions from the commissioners?
I guess I would move, all things considered, I think I would move for approval of the variance.
And I would second that.
Got a motion in a second to approve. All in favor, saying by saying aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. Pass with all present.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Notice of public hearing. Way Park Planning Commission will hold a meeting at City Hall, nineteen thirteenth Avenue North, six thirty or soon after, on July fourteenth. To hear the following request. Request of Ann C. Enderman and W D. Spanwick, Inc. For the interim use permit to allow for an extractive use gravel permit in a A-one agricultural residential district. The property is listed as partial numbers nine eight point six one six zero one point zero one three one. And nine eight point six one six zero one point zero one three three. And nine eight six zero six zero one point zero one three two in the vicinity of, uh, ninety-one oh five County Road one thirty-eight. City of Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. Uh, public hearing opened at seven thirty-three.
Uh, Chair Jansky, uh, folks in the audience, anyone watching at home. As noted, this request is for a interim use permit for a anticipated twenty-year mining project. On the subject property, which is, uh, for reference, uh, a little bit west of the, the hard drives, uh, pit area there. That you can see on screen with the, uh, the twin ponds. Impacted areas would only, uh, be those located, uh, within the, the framework of the, uh, outline here. The Anderson, or excuse me, Enderman property on the, uh, south and east side of County Road one thirty-eight, uh, doesn't have any proposed, uh, uh, work on it. I did include it in the notice area for this project, just to ensure that we get, uh, anyone in the area that would receive a notice. The proposed project works around and maintains the existing home, uh, farm site on the property. Uh, this was a, a situation where the previous homeowner, um, passed away, is my understanding. And there's a, a transfer of the deed that was triggered, uh, by their passing. Uh, the applicants have been coordinating with city staff since earlier this year, uh, when they approached the, uh, city regarding feasibility and viability of the proposed project. The intent would be to extract, extract sand and gravel for a commercial use sale for an estimated period of twenty years. The site wouldn't be all, uh, opened up and done in one swoop. It would be done through, uh, smaller tracks of, uh, a couple acres at a time. Uh, there would be no permanent structures associated with the project, as all equipment would be portable. Uh, the list of, uh, submitted portable equipment includes, uh, central crusher, screens, loaders, generators, wash plants, uh, classifier, concrete plant, and asphalt plant. It, it was noted that, uh, not all these pieces of equipment would necessarily be on the property at any one time. But just that they were, uh, potential equipment that would be associated with the, with the request and could be utilized with the operation at some point or another. The applicants estimate that the life of the project would yield approximately seventy thousand tons of class five, class six gravel. Uh, one hundred and fifty thousand tons of washed rock and sand, and, uh, one hundred and fifty thousand tons of select granular borrow. The proposed hours of operation would be daylight hours, uh, and the applicants have noted that dependent on the season, uh, they would propose these hours to, to change, to have some flexibility. Staff would recommend that in any case, that some conditions limiting hours be established, so as not to negatively impact residents in the vicinity of the project. Uh, I don't, I would not have any, uh, proposed operation with the six days a week, um, but mainly the, the hours. Uh, applicants have advised that most of the activity is based on customer needs, so the project is not likely to be active continually. And I would expect that, uh, some questions are gonna come up here tonight, and maybe they can expand on, on that. All waters proposed to be kept on-site via dewatering into existing grasslands to recycle the water back to the pit. Uh, I have been in contact with the Sauk River Watershed District regarding the proposal. And their staff has noted that erosion control need to be maintained to their standards, as well as possible concerns with the applicant's, uh, potential for home lots. With, uh, reclamation due to stormwater pond design standards. I would also note that, uh, since this is also ag rural residential area, the minimum lot area for a home is ten acres. So, uh, any option, at least at this time, for a home site development would be limited. Uh, although this could potentially change in the future and, uh, would likely be different, in fact, at the conclusion of a, of tw- twenty-year span. Due to the location of the proposal adjacent to the Sauk River and being within a defined shoreline area per, uh, city ordinance. Uh, as required, uh, by our ordinances, we supplied a copy of the notice to the Minnesota DNR for their review and comment. Uh, the DNR has thirty days from receipt of the notice to comment, and the project can't be reviewed or approved, uh, approved by the city council. Until they, that thirty days either runs out or until we receive comment, um, back from them one way or another. Uh, due to the frontage of the project on, uh, two county roads, both, uh, one thirty-eight and one twenty-one. Uh, staff also provided information regarding the request to the Stearns Highway, excuse me, Stearns County Highway Department staff for their review and input. They advised that any new approach used or location related to the pit would need a new approach permit through their office and would be subject to intersection setbacks. Uh, they would permit one approach to each site, and all others would need to be removed. They advised that the plans did not note any approaches aside from the existing field approaches. And that they would need to be involved in future discussion regarding accesses as the, uh, project progresses. Interestingly, uh, uh, I did not have any feedback from the, uh, county on, uh, any traffic concerns or use. Such as, I was expecting, and I know there's been a concern brought up by an adjacent landowner on, uh, the condition of County Road one thirty-eight. And, uh, possibly being exacerbated by additional, uh, heavy trucks on there. Uh, I, I, my intent is to follow up with, uh, Stern- My intent is to follow up with the Stearns County staff and see if they wish to take a closer look at that or, or have any additional input, but really their, their primary comments were just regarding the accesses. The reclamation intent for the area would be a mixture of pasture and ponds, including the previously mentioned possible home sites. At time of reclamation, the applicants would be responsible for submission of a reclamation plan in accordance with city ordinance regarding mining and extractive uses. As the ordinance allows the city to require a performance guarantee for reclamation to ensure the work is completed at project completion, staff would recommend this allowance be utilized for this project. City council in the past has required significant bond or other performance guarantee amount. You see this most commonly for the solar projects, but also for the, the case of the, the recent MTL mining project on Granite View Road, which was increased to five hundred thousand by the city council after my recommendation of three hundred and fifty thousand. That both serves as an incentive to complete reclamation and ensure that if, if needed, the city has resources to undertake work as may be needed, factoring in inflation as necessary. I would recommend a bond amount for five hundred thousand for this project as well. In fact, that the, the city council would uphold that. I've, planning commissioners, I've sent you some information in the past day with some details regarding concerns raised by an adjacent landowner here, very similar, ironically enough, to concerns that were raised by a previous project we reviewed tonight.